All right, um, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve or roll up regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
I'll say it.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Gief.
Aye.
Approval of consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Gief.
Aye.
Staff agenda items, we have one item with Brad, City Engineer, consideration of resolution to accept the feasibility report in order of public hearing. Uh, Brad, would you like to talk us through that?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, tonight, as you said, I'm here seeking a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-14, authorizing the following actions. First one would be to accept the feasibility report for the 2026 Street Improvement Project. Uh, the second one would be to authorize the preparation of plans and specifications. And then the third one would be to set the, uh, public hearing, um, for street improvements on 66th Street North and Great Oak Trail North. Um, just to give you a little bit of background on these streets, uh, both 66th Street North and Great Oak Trail North would be included with the 2026 Street Improvement Project. Both of these streets are of similar length and width. Each of them have a dead-end cul-de-sac, um, at the end of the street segment. Uh, they're roughly, um, uh, twenty-three feet wide. Um, the forensic information that we received from Braun regarding the pavement thickness and underlying Class V aggregate shows that there is sufficient, um, bituminous material and underlying aggregate to support a nine-ton design roadway. Um, typically on our designs, we include a three-inch bituminous mat over the top of the existing reclaimed material. So, um, the only, I guess I should mention the only significant difference between the two street segments is that Great Oak Trail North has a bituminous curb, um, that is, uh, on either side of the roadway to convey stormwater down to, uh, a pair of catch basins at a low point about two-hundred feet, uh, south of the dead-end cul-de-sac. Um, so just to give you some particulars on the cost of the, the improvements, um, the total cost of the improvement is three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. Uh, if we break that down further, uh, into each street segment, uh, the estimated project cost for 66th Street is a hundred-and-seventy-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars, and Great Oaks Trail is a hundred-and-ninety-nine, uh, thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Uh, as in prior projects, we do have city maintenance dollars that was allocated to these two, two street programs or two street, uh, uh, segments. Uh, 66th Street, uh, city contribution is eighteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-four dollars, and Great Oak Trail was nineteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, for a total of thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. Um, we did have two neighborhood meetings, um, for each of these roadway segments. Um, and most were well-attended, uh, and we did not have any residents, uh, that were not in favor of the road improvement project after we, after we reviewed the feasibility report that I've prepared for you tonight. Uh, so I think everybody is still, uh, greatly in favor of, of moving forward with this road reconstruction project. Um, I should mention that the assessment role or the mock assessment role is also included with the feasibility report. Um, for the 66th Street, Street Segment, there are ten buildable units along that roadway, and then for Great Oaks Trail, there were only seven, uh, buildable units. Um, so the difference or the, the assessment rate for the 66th Street Segment is roughly fifteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, and the estimate for the Great Oaks Trail is twenty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. And, and basically this difference is, uh, the density difference between the two streets and the number of buildable units. So, um, with that said, staff is recommending that the City Council accept the feasibility report as presented, uh, direct staff to prepare plans and specifications, and then, uh, set the public hearing for consideration of the 2026 Street Improvement Project at the regular council meeting scheduled for, uh, Monday, November 3rd, 2025. So, with that said, I would gladly answer any questions that the mayor or the council would have.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. A couple of questions. So you had the preliminary assessments available for the residents at the meeting? They saw the numbers?
I did, sir. Yep.
Okay. And then for us that are a little newer on the council, we'll just want to walk through the schedule of moving forward on this, and then what would be the go, no-go, drop-dead, if you will, point to this where we don't go ahead? Would that be before we accept bids?
Um, so yeah, the project schedule, uh, the next step would of course be to hold the public hearing, and that would be the next opportunity for residents to decide whether or not they were in favor of the project. Um, and hopefully they would, uh, either attend the hearing or send the clerk or myself an email or a formal letter letting us know that they were no longer in favor of the project. So that would be the next opportunity. And then, um, the third opportunity, uh, would be at the time that we receive bids for the project. If the bids were to come in, uh, extremely high, um, I would think that that may trigger some folks to not, uh, no, or no longer be in favor of the project. So, uh, there's a couple other opportunities here before we, uh, award the project to a construction contractor. Um, we are proposing that the hearing, for the first public hearing be, uh, in November. Um, we would come back in January with, uh, asking for approval of the plans and specs and go offer bids. Uh, that January takes about a month, uh, to, uh, get to the bid opening, and so that puts us in the middle of February, so we're, we're scheduled or, or planning to, uh, bring, uh, bids back to council, uh, for the March 2026 meeting.
So, basically Brad, um, if the bids were to come in high, um, you'd go back to the, the, um, folks on that, um, street and then present the, the new, um, information for them, and they would potentially make another decision at that point?
Yeah, I, I do have, I would say ninety-five percent of, uh, the residents living on both street segments, I do have their email addresses, so it would be a quick, uh, email to everybody just to let them know that, um, you know, here are the bids, what the bid price is, and, um, to let me know or to let your council members know that they're, you know, they're no longer in favor of the project. So, um, it's fairly simple to do that.
Any other questions? I do have a, just a small question. So you had mentioned that the road has sufficient base layers to support a nine-ton road. Um, is there other cases? We, I think we've built seven-ton roads before. So is it, i- is there any consistency, um, in terms of the, the, the thickness of, of a road that we build in these projects? Is it, does it vary on the conditions that are present in each road, or is there, um, you know?
Yeah, yeah. So most of the roads that we've, and I can't think of one where we didn't have a sufficient, um, underlying aggregate base in a bituminous material. Typically to get to that nine-ton design, you need between eight and ten inches of Class V or reclaimed material, and then the three inches of bituminous on top of that. Um, so, uh, I don't remember any, off the top of my head anyway, any previous projects where we didn't meet that. Um, if you looked at the forensic report, I want to say, um, 66th Street North, uh, had roughly or averaged about fifteen to eighteen inches of Class V, and apparently, apparently that neighborhood was built near a gravel pit or over a gravel pit, so that kind of explains why it's so thick there. And then I think Great Oak Trails, um, I want to say one of the borings showed about seven inches of, of, uh, Class V material, but all, everything else was, was greater than ten, and, and once you reclaim the existing bituminous material, you know, any, well, so I think Great Oaks Trail averaged two and a half or two and a quarter, uh, inches of bituminous. So, um, all the borings that, that we took or, or cores that we took will have at least eight inches of, uh, material underneath, uh, the new bituminous.
Thank you, Brad.
Well, well.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, so, Brad, sorry, but, you know, when you talk about the, the, you know, seven, eight inches of, of gravel underneath the base, and then you have, you know, two and a half or three inches of bituminous on top of that. Now you grind that down, then you put three inches of new over it, or you, you, you leave that and you put three inches over that?
Yeah, so typically we reclaim the existing bituminous streets and the underlying gravel altogether, uh, in a homogeneous material to build that Class V base, and then we'll put a new three-inch bituminous mat over the top of, of that reclaimed material. Now, the way we make the driveways work is we'll push, shape all the excess material on the sides towards the middle of the road so that we can get a really nice, steep crown on the road. And, and the reason we do that is so that we can shed the water better to the ditches and, and off the road, uh, where the stormwater belongs. So, um, it's worked really well on all of the projects that we've done so far, and I have no reason to think that, uh, these streets won't, uh, behave the same way.
So do you typically put the three inches, and then there's a wear course that you put on top of it, like?
That is, so the wear course, the bituminous is one thick layer, it's three inches thick.
Three inches, okay. And that's, that's compacted to three inches?
Correct, correct.
Thanks, Brad.
Any other questions, or can we get a motion?
Uh, Mayor, can I ask, or add one more comment? I don't know if anybody's in the audience, uh, from either street segment at our neighborhood meetings. I had mentioned that they were, would be more than welcome to attend the, the council meeting tonight to, uh, share their opinions on, uh, whether they were in favor or not in favor of the, the, the project. I did not receive, uh, well, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that. I, I did receive one email that said they were still in favor of the project, uh, from Arless and, and Bruce Caff. Uh, they're residents that live on Great Oak Trail. Um, but I did not receive any other comments from anybody, and I, I, I asked everybody to send me comments, but of course, uh, I didn't get any other than the ones I just mentioned. So I just, I just want to make sure that nobody's in the audience or.
I don't see anyone in the audience. Is there anyone online that might?
There's someone still online. Uh, I don't know who it is, if it would like to speak.
If they're, yeah, if they're, if whoever's online is listening and they want to, um, provide a comment, jump in, you know, raise your hand on the Zoom call, otherwise we can entertain a motion. Doesn't look like anyone's online that's going to comment, so. All right, I would, uh, make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-14.
Second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Gief?
Aye.
New business, consideration of council work session, November 3rd, 5:30 PM. Um, Kim, is this regarding the, the topic of, uh, complaint policy? Okay.
Yes.
So yeah, just to, just to clarify, there was a little bit of misunderstanding after the August, um, meeting with the intent of the council, so, um, going forward, we need to make sure that we're very, um, clear with what we're, um, asking to be discussed in, in future council meetings. But that, uh, is intent of that one to discuss any gaps and potential improvements in, um, complaint policy, and, um, if the, um, council can just really confirm right now that that was the intent in August meeting, just to make sure we're not wasting time talking about something that's not really an appetite by the council.
No, I think as we've heard even tonight, we, we probably should have a little more discussion on the process, so we're comfortable with it, we're getting follow-up, and we know that, what the process is, and if we're asked, and that way we make sure things are getting.
And I think a potential outcome, um, of that, um, workshop to discuss this could be, you know, a mechanism to make sure we do a little bit better job of communicating. Um, Ben, are you, are you clear on, on, uh, that topic?
Yep, I am, uh, fully for making sure that we got it.
John?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right. What's that?
I also am on board with that, Evan.
Okay, all right. Um, so that moves us to unfinished business. There's none listed. Uh, discussion items, um, this is where, Kim, I don't know if, if it's, if there's anything you can share regarding the, um, the concerns that were mentioned in public comment. I do know that there was, um, some follow-up based on, it's a brief discussion you, you and I had. Is there anything relevant to share at this time, or do, do we need, um, uh, Jack to, and maybe yourself, to put together a more, a formal response to the person submitting the complaint? Or is there anything that you can share?
Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, I'll just read from the zoning administrator's report that complaint did come in. Uh, the city received a formal complaint that the property owner was having a large gathering over the weekend where it created noise that was disturbing the neighbors. Per the zoning administrator, he inspected the property and noticed large bill trash bags on the area where the gathering took place. I sent a letter to the property owner advising them to remove the trash bags and be respectful to the neighbors. In addition to that, um, another complaint came in on that property, and it has been turned over to legals.
Okay, so thanks for that update. Uh, okay, so the next. Um, anything, uh, for future agenda items? First of all, um, are there any other staff updates, Kim, to, to share?
I don't think so right now.
Okay. Uh, anything on, from the council on potential future agenda items? I got a couple of things, uh, yes.
I just have a short update. I am meeting with Representative Wayne Johnson tomorrow to just kind of touch base on status of, you know, things going on in the state, and so if there's anything that anyone would like me to address in that meeting, I'm happy to do that. I've also reached out to our other representatives for our city, and I'm trying to schedule meetings with them. I just haven't been able to get one set yet. But please reach out to me, send an email, call if there's anything you want to make sure that I touch base. Um, my purpose to let him know it's important to residents and grants, that that's for, front of mind while he's, um, in office for us.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? So I have a couple of things that I want to get council direction on. So, um, as most of the council members know, grant has rarely pursued external funding to supplement a road's budget. Um, in August, we did, um, have a discussion with Brad about the pursuit of the ship grant, and we gave Brad the authorization to pursue that. But there's many other state, regional, and, and federal programs that could benefit the city. Um, the caveat is, it takes money to spend money, so we would have to specifically, um, uh, give Brad the direction to pursue these grants. And so, um, it typically hasn't something that we've really pursued. But, um, I've met, uh, Kurt Rohrig, a grant resident. He's here in the, in the big crowd today, um, and he's offered to donate some of his, uh, time to pursue some of these grants. And as a program manager with, uh, many years' experience helping other governmental entities securing funding, I, I think you'd be well-suited to this. Um, there is a, there is a, uh, uh, key opportunity that's, um, expiring in December 12th. It's called the Local Road Improvement Program. And I just want to gauge, uh, council's interest in, uh, potentially allowing Mr. Rohrig to assist with that application and have him, you know, present findings and next steps for, uh, th- that program and maybe other programs at future meetings. And as a caveat, though, you know, um, although, uh, Mr. Rohrig is offering his time pro bono, you know, for the benefit of the community, for our roads, um, he might need, uh, a few hours to spend with Brad to just validate assumptions, so it, it wouldn't be, I don't think anything, it could be totally on its own. He would need some collaboration with Brad, and so, um, I just want to float that out there, you know, to see the, the councils, um, how the council feels about allowing Mr. Rohrig to, to do most of the legwork, to put together an application, and then, uh, potentially have Brad just do a, a final review and submit the application. And, um, that being said, do we still have Brad on? Did Brad?
He's still there.
So, uh, Brad, um, I just want to get your, your thoughts on, on that, and if that's something that, um, you feel would, would potentially, um, work?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, yeah, I think it's a great idea. If we've got a resident that's willing to donate his time to pursue some of those grant applications or opportunities, I think that would be, uh, that would be awesome, and I would certainly be able to support him with graphics or cost estimates or whatever he thinks he needs to, uh, complete the applications.
Okay, so before opening up for council input, um, Kim, Amanda, this is something we really haven't done before. Um, are there any governing processes or guidelines with, with, uh, accepting pro bono work on behalf of the city?
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor and council. Uh, yes, in this situation, we would want to do, uh, an authorizing resolution. So it's just like a one-page document that recognizes the donation. It's a donation of time and services, right, versus a fina, uh, money donation, and then you just accept it with gratitude.
So would we need that, um, resolution from the adopted? Or could that be, uh, like, before he, before he spends any time? Or could that be something that, um, could be done at the November meeting?
Oh, yeah, for sure, we can have that at the November meeting.
Okay, so I'm going to open up to the council's thoughts on that and see what you guys think.
Sounds amazing.
Any questions?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, something we heard over and over, is just like people want the roads to be improved. Um, there's a lot of issues, so anyone that can help is truly grateful that.
And, and, oh, I, I should, I will, it sounds like I had you at hello, but I just had a quick, uh, I got this from Kurt, just a quick bio of Kurt's experience, and, and basically his motivation, from the top of the page, uh, his motivation is to help the city undertake affordable road projects for the citizens and, and for more projects and otherwise possible without outside funding to result in beautiful and functional city roads. So I think that's great, that someone from the community is willing to step up and donate their time to, um, such a cause that we all find near and dear to our hearts, roads, so.
Could I, um, ask Brad a question? Brad, have you seen these applications before?
You know, I've seen the local road improvement one, uh, and we actually, uh, submitted, um, an application for Mcusick Road, actually, I think, back in 2018 or 2019. Uh, but we weren't successful. Um, those are highly competitive dollars, and, you know, Mcusick did not score very well on, uh, the system, but that doesn't mean that we can't, you know, continue to go after these dollars and apply for them if, if we've got a citizen, you know, working for us on our behalf and willing to put the applications in, then it doesn't hurt to, to, to move forward.
And what, what is the typical grant size depending on, you know, does it depend on the, the, the quality of the road? Does it depend on the length of the road? Does it depend on, you know, how many people put in applications and how much money is left? What, how does it work?
Yeah, I think all those are factors. Uh, you know, they'll look at the cost estimate, they'll look at, you know, on that one in particular, in the Mcusick, I think they, they were looking for regional projects more than just local projects. Um, you know, it had to be, and, and we considered Mcusick at that time more of a collector's street, and that's kind of why we thought we could, um, score successfully on, on that roadway. Um, we did have to get, um, Washington, we had to get in a, a, a letter from Washington County, a consent letter from them, and I think Stillwater as well. So, um, you know, there, there, there's a lot of legwork that goes into these, these, uh, grant applications, and like the mayor said earlier, you know, you got to spend a little money to put in, or to get a little money out of it, and, and, um, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily have any, um, roadways in grant that would be considered a regional transportation, um, you know, corridor, I guess. So it, it hurts us in that fashion, but, um, again, it certainly doesn't hurt to try.
Okay, all right, thanks, Brad.
Um, next item I have to share.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, can I just get volunteer's name for the minutes?
Oh, Kurt, Kurt Rohrig, R-O-H-R-I-G. And thanks Kurt for, for coming.
Yeah, I, I had planned, um, at some point, if it was approved, to get involved, to give, you, give the council, you know, a presentation of some kind, um, of the action plan of how we would submit, and, you know, who would have to be involved in, in some ideas around that. Uh, I've done, done this for the last eighteen years for state, state government. So it's, it's kind of, it is a lot of information, and it's kind of telling your story.
Yep.
So, and for us to tell our story, you know, ultimately, I think we're going to end up talking about what our goals. We have a ten-year road plan right now. Over fifty percent of our funding is, is monitoring for ten years. But we know that's not realistic.
So, you're making a lot of good points. Um, we didn't have you as part of the agenda, so I got to respectfully cut you off, but, um, I appreciate your enthusiasm, and we'll, um, we'll have it more formalized, um, going forward. Um, so the next topic I wanted to get council's inputs on, um, we're a relatively new council. I think, um, the, this council might have some, some different ideas on doing things differently with how we've done it in the past, and there's, I've gotten some, um, calls before about questions on like, how do we provide oversight and transparency and accountability? So I think we, we need to, um, have a potential conversation to make sure we're clearly defining, um, and understanding our roles in, in providing, um, those things. And so it's, since it's a complicated topic with, with many facets, I think it might be, um, worthy of a working session to, um, ensure council alignment on, you know, how, how the council, what our role is in providing oversight, transparency, and accountability. And so I just want to, um, get the, the feedback from, uh, council on that. I mean, you think that, um, everything's fine, there's no changes needed? Or you think there's some opportunity for the council to be more engaged and, and get more information, and, um?
I think so. I mean, I think, as you were saying, you know, specifically when you talk to residents, they, they may not know what's happening all the time. And I think being more transparent or getting more people engaged in the city is, is only going to help.
We, and specifically, I was, I was referring to our role. I know that, um, I may have an, I may have different expectations, uh, of, of staff, and, um, I don't think it's, it's fair to staff for me to be imposing what I feel is the right thing to do. Um, and that's why I think it's important for the council to be engaged, and it should be a council. I, um, I think we all know that we work for the residents, and, um, it, as mayor, uh, I think I represent the council, but not solely. And so I want to make sure, like, the council is aligned on, on any, um, kind of ideas I might have in terms of working with staff or, or setting the expectations. So I think we really need to be. So I think we really need to be very clear on our expectations. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's great. I mean, I'm obviously a newer member of the council, and so I don't always know how the nuts and bolts work. And so having an opportunity to kind of sit down and say, here's how you can, you know, get something on the agenda, here's how you can, this is an agenda item versus a work session item, you know, those kind of things, I think, would be really helpful for someone who has a fresh seat on here, so.
Yeah, and a lot of that is outlined in the various LMC documents. However, there are some gray areas, and those are the gray areas where I was struggling with. I reached out for guidance. And just to name a couple of examples, like, if I, what is my role as mayor in attending staff meetings? I personally think that it would be good for me to attend staff meetings, so I'm aware of everything that's going on, just more for information's sake, not to direct, just more for information. Because we don't get a lot of, we have a complete section on our agenda for staff updates, but we don't really hear a lot of what's going on. And so, and then the other thing is, you know, looking at the example of the confusion, misunderstanding of having this complaint process on the agenda. That was another thing where I was like, okay, well, as mayor, running a meeting, what control do I have or not have to add agenda items on my own? And feedback from the League of Minnesota Cities is, that's a gray area you need to have council alignment on, how you as a city and a council want to handle that. And so those are just a couple of things with the gray area, things that I think we should discuss and have a clear alignment on.
Yeah, so if I could pop in for just one second, from a legal perspective, what you want to do is completely in your, you know, purview. You are the council, you set your agendas, you set your policies, you set how you want to operate as a council. And I think, at least in, you know, cities, the other cities that I work with, it's incredibly helpful and important to have a conversation, a work session really, right, because it's not necessarily an agenda item. But to be able for the five of you to talk about, how do you want to run this city? Because you are the people charged with doing that, and we are the people that are charged with listening to what you want and then making it happen, of course, legally.
All right, so the last thing I have.
Can I just go back? So then we had this, how do we now move this discussion into a work session? Is that the next step, right?
Yeah, that would be the next step.
Yeah, so is the idea that this would be on that November 3rd work session? So it sounds like you have a work session to talk about the complaint policy on November 3rd. Would you also want to talk about council roles, ideals, and sort of structure at that same meeting?
I'm happy, I feel like they're, I'm happy to have it in the same meeting. I don't know how much time we're anticipating we need for the complaint versus, I want to make sure we give enough time to both, so.
So just a thought starter, how would it be to budget a half hour for each? And then we'll start on the one, if the one goes over, then we could bump the second topic to the next month?
I would, Mr. Mayor, I would say, if we're going to do that in precedence, what is the one to start with, so we make sure that is the most important thing we get across?
Well, I think the one that was teed up first is the potential revisions to complaint process, you know, addressing any gaps there. And actually, let me talk about the last one I have, because that might dovetail in a little bit, too. So as we're approaching year end, I'd also like the council to reconsider our staff performance review process. At a recent LMC event, I learned that most mayors from similarly sized companies, excuse me, cities, follow a different approach than ours. So right now, our current process is we submit individual evaluations with no real visibility until the rest of the process. We hand in our performance evaluations to each staff member, and that's where it ends. I've never seen anything happen after that. So in contrast, from what I've learned, talking with mayors from other cities, is typically what they do is they involve the full council, you know, working together, discussing together rather than just submitting their own individual feedback through closed work sessions led by the staff attorney, with emphasis on, you know, clearly defined expectations, transparency, you know, fairness and accountability. And so I think the ability to have a council kind of discuss that together rather than just, you know, submitting the individual performance appraisals would result in a more robust discussion. So just throwing that out there, if that's something that the council feels would be approached to consider moving forward. Any comments?
For me, I mean, it makes sense, as, you know, I'm now in my second year of this, and I have no idea how the performance process even works. So I think that's something that we need to be able to manage and take care of, so it makes sense.
John?
I'm okay with it. It sounds like a good change, potentially. It's fine.
Okay, well, we got at least three people in alignment.
Yeah, I mean, Ben and I went to the League of Minnesota, like, and actually Greg, you're there too, at that training, they had actually talked about it a little bit, and it did sound like what they were recommending or talked about for the process was it was much more collaborative, and they went through the process on that. So that's what I was under the assumption we would do as well. So knowing that we don't do that, I think it makes sense to do it in a more collaborative way.
Okay.
So just a quick point of clarification, if I may, on that.
Yeah.
So for the staff performance reviews, you would like that to be done where some sort of form gets sent, well, let me back up. In most of my other cities, the way that we do it is the performance review is either for the city administrator or the city clerk, depending upon the size of the city, because not every city has a city administrator, right? Essentially, it's the head of the city. And so they typically do annual reviews where they send out, sometimes they send out feedback to the staff, seeking feedback on, you know, the clerk or the administrator, and sometimes they don't. And sometimes they send out, you know, kind of questionnaire forms to the council that get filled out. All of that information comes to me, and then I push all that out to all of the council, so everybody has, you know, all the data. So I collect it all, send it all to the council so they have that ahead of time, and then they do a closed work session. Because this can be a closed meeting, obviously you're talking about somebody who works for you, and so that doesn't need to be something that is aired publicly. That can be something under Minnesota Open Meeting Law, you can close that to have that conversation. And then it's up to the council in terms of if they want the staff member in attendance at the meeting, or if they want to talk, the five of you privately, and then bring in the staff member and have a conversation, what's working, what's not working, what's good, what's bad, whatever. And then typically at that same time is when they would also be talking about compensation adjustments for the following year. So these are typically done at the end of the, somewhere near the end of the year, or if they're on like a whatever their annual, you know, date is, to reflect in terms of compensation as well.
Okay, so it sounds like you're familiar with the general process we're talking about, and you would probably just need the council to answer a couple of these questions that you posed, these couple of choices. And is that something that we could roll into? I know it doesn't seem like agreement of adopting a new process, needs to have a full-fledged work session, but maybe just part of, maybe in conjunction with what we talked about, just to have you come to the council with these questions and get the answers from the council? I mean, what do you think is the best way forward on this?
I can do whatever the council wants. If you want, as part of your sort of council roles, ideals, and structure session that you're talking about doing for the work session, this could be one of those things. Hey, how do you want to set up this review process? And then that feedback I would get from you, and I can give you some samples, you know, of some cities, so you can see what's done. And maybe you could just say, copy this model, please. And then we would move forward with, you know, probably having a closed session at the December meeting, a review session, unless you wanted to have a special meeting. But if you don't want to do a special meeting, then we would just put a closed session in the meeting that's already scheduled, right? Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we don't need to provide any specific answers right now, that's all to come.
You don't, unless you want to. If you want to try to wrap everything into the November meeting, and so you want to be able to do a closed session.
Well, I mean, no, for right now, you don't need any more specific direction from the council on this.
I don't think so. It sounds like that's what, I've seen head nodding that we want to move forward, so I can make that happen.
Okay. That's all I had. So we get the community calendar, then we go into closed session, and then we adjourn. So who would like to read the community calendar?
I would love to. Montomeda Public School Board meeting Thursday, October 9th and October 23rd, Montomeda District Education Center at 7:00 PM. Stillwater Public Schools Board meeting Thursday, October 9th at the Stillwater City Hall at 7:00 PM. And Washington County Commissioners meeting Tuesday, Government Center, 9:00 AM.
Excellent job, Ben.
Thank you.
You did a really good job. So for those online and in attendance here, we're going to do two closed sessions and then adjourn. The closed sessions will be pursuant to Minnesota State, blah, blah, blah. Basically, we're talking about attorney-client privileged communication to discuss pending litigation, Helica versus Grant. And then the second one is the same for pending litigation, Sam Scott versus Grant. So that being said, we will give folks a few minutes to leave, and then we'll open our closed session and then adjourn after that. So thank you, everyone, for coming. Sorry to have to kick you out.
Do we need to move to a closed session or not?
What?
Do we have to move for a closed session or not?
I think we do. Well, Kim, do we? We have to make a motion to enter the closed session, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll wait.
And I guess I would suggest just a five-minute break and.
Okay, agreed. Take a five-minute break. Good, that?
That's fine.
All right, five-minute break, and then we'll open our closed session. And then can you stop the recording, right?